Good evening. The 35th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members of the general public, the press, any visitors today, please turn off your handheld electronic devices at a minimum, please put them on silent vibrate so we can have a productive hearing here today. In lieu of the invocation, actually, we do have someone that's going to provide the invocation for us today, Minister Candace Green of Gethsemane AME.
Ms. Bauerhead, God, we come before you today just saying thank you. First for this day, Lord, we just ask that you be in this room, that your peace settle over all of us as our elected officials make decisions for the city and citizens of Baltimore. Help us to hear one another and act in love and grace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. As appointed privilege, also, please, unless you are speaking, we ask all members to wear masks of the general public at this time. At this time, we're going to now turn to the flag and state the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will proceed to adoption of the journal. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the Journal of the June 21st, 2022 proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the Journal of the June 23rd, 2022 special meeting proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, that journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the Journal of the 2nd, June 23rd, 2022 special meeting proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found in the beginning of page two on the agenda. We'll now turn to bills being introduced tonight. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0250, The Councilmember Mary Pat Clark Opportunity to Purchase Act. For the purpose of repealing City Code Article 13, Subtitle 6, Tenant's Right of First Refusal as Obsolete and replacing it with a subtitle establishing a tenant's opportunity to purchase certain rental facilities, defining certain terms, establishing certain exemptions from the subtitle, providing for certain rules of interpretation, authorizing the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development to adopt rules and regulations to carry out the subtitle, requiring that a landlord provide a notice of offer of sale to certain persons on deciding to sell a rental facility, establishing certain procedures for landlords and tenants in instances where a party submits a statement of interest to purchase a rental facility, allowing for the landlord to require certain earnest money deposits, permitting the assignment of certain rights, prohibiting a waiver of certain rights absent agreed on consideration, requiring certain disclosures if a rental facility is transferred to a party other than a tenant, requiring certain reports, providing for certain penalties, and generally relating to providing tenants with the opportunity to purchase certain rental facilities. Sponsor Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I would like to, before we go to you, Madam Councilwoman, I would like to give a point of privilege to the former City Council President, Mary Pat Clark, with this bill his name after. If you could please stand real quick and give a huge round of applause. Obviously, the motivation of this bill from Councilwoman who represents her district now is a testament to her decades' worth of fighting for the citizens of Baltimore by any means necessary. She served, again, as president of this body and was also a councilwoman, and we love when you come back, Madam President. So, thank you for being here with us tonight. With that, I'm going to turn to the gentlewoman from the 14th District. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. Today, I'm introducing this legislation that repeals the Tenant Right of First Refusal program and replaces it with the Councilwoman, Mary Pat Clark, Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act. Owners of rental property must provide offer of purchase to a renter if the owner is planning on selling it, complete with the last two years of inspections and additional details about the property. The renter will have 14 days to provide a letter of interest that they will purchase. This is the first of two pieces of legislation that will talk about this subject. This is for single-family homes, and the other, which is going to take a minute to get through, will be around multifamily buildings. The reason we're naming it after my predecessor is because she was the first leader in Baltimore and, I believe, the entire country to put forth the Tenant Right of First Refusal law early in her career. I believe it is a fitting tribute to her legacy as a fighter for all of her constituents, especially those who need it most. It will surprise no one that the Councilwoman had asked me not to name it after her but to after Frank Fisher, who worked side by side with her and Vinnie Quayle at St. Ambrose Housing Aid Center to make sure that residents were not evicted during this time. It was necessary at the time because renters were being evicted en masse when homes were being sold at the height of the market at that time. In 1997, I was able to purchase my first house on 2513 Guilford Avenue because of her, this law. The law has since been weakened, and now, more than ever, it is extremely important to bring it back and strengthen it so that others have the same opportunity that I had. I look forward to the discussion on this bill, and thanks to my colleagues for their support.
Thank you. At this time, are there any co-sponsors of the bill? I see the hand of Chairman Conway, Burnett, Schleifer, Dorsey, Porter, Cohen, Glover, Stokes, Torrance. And so, the Councilwoman talked about former President Mary Pat Clark not wanting the bill to be named after her, but we tripled down on that. She didn't want to stand, and then she didn't want a standing ovation, so we gave her the double whammy today. So, all the love in this chamber for you. With that, this bill is assigned to the Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 22-0251, Director of Public Works Failure to Provide Required Weekly Collection Services. For the purpose of creating a penalty to apply to the Director of Public Works if the Director does not provide for the collection and removal of mixed refuse and recyclable materials on a weekly basis. Sponsor Schleifer.
Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, so as everybody here knows, we've been pressing the Department of Public Works for some time now regarding different functions that have been offline for a while, whether it be street sweeping or recycling collections. So, recycling collections had been missed for a long time, sometimes two, three weeks at a time, and then now we're on bi-weekly collections. The City Code states that the Director of the Department of Public Works is required to provide these services weekly. So, right now, DPW and the Director is in violation of City Code. But the City Code also says that each one of us who resides in the city has to make sure that we put our trash and recycling in cans. And so, when we put our trash and recycling in cans, and then DPW doesn't pick up those cans, and the wind or animals get into those cans, and the trash ends up everywhere, not only do we have a lot of grime in the city from that, but we also have citations that come our way for having trash on our property. And so, there's a gross double standard here where the cause that's required by City Code that doesn't pick up currently right now has a free pass, and there's no penalty in the City Code for that not happening. But the residents of Baltimore, we end up getting fined when those cans end up overflowing or end up blown over onto our property. And so, this bill is to change that, is to change that double standard, and it is to lead by example. And so, to take the responsibility that we, as city leaders and agencies, have to do our part, that that's taken seriously, and that we're not just penalizing the people of Baltimore. We're taking it upon ourselves to continue to honor our commitment and honor what the City Code requires us to do. And so, that's the purpose of this bill, and I look forward to discussions during the hearings that will be upcoming on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. We will now move to resolutions. Excuse me? Oh, sorry. Do we have any additional co-sponsors? If we could please reflect that Councilman Glover is a co-sponsor of this bill. Thank you, Councilman Glover. Again, that bill's been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. We will now move on to resolutions to be introduced for first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first resolution.
City Council Resolution 22-0113R, Recognizing the Service of Avery Eisenstark. For the purpose of recognizing Avery Eisenstark for his 29 cumulative years of distinguished service to the city of Baltimore. Sponsor President Mosby.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Avery Eisenstark is an institution, not just to this chamber, not just the city government, but to the citizens of Baltimore. He's a walking dictionary, encyclopedia, and city charter code in his head and his brain. And it's amazing to see someone who's dedicated so much of their time and their service and their energy to better the lives of the citizens of Baltimore, but more importantly, ensuring that, as transparent and as efficient as possible, we can deliver good government to the citizens of Baltimore. He's a generational employee for any institution, be it public or private, and we thought that it was really fitting and important for us to recognize him in person tonight in this chamber. So, with that said, I'm going to turn to Madam Vice President to move this resolution forward.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I guess I just want to say a few words. Could we invite?
He's coming up.
Okay.
Wait, hold on, wait, because he's going to stand up. So, you can just relax a little bit. Relax.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure some other folks might want to say something.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you personally for your 29-plus years of service. I've been knowing you at least 15 of those 29 years, and the first thing I can think of, when I first met Avery and went up to that sixth floor of Legislative Reference and walked into his office, that's when I got a history lesson of Don Quixote. And what a shrine and museum of just knowing everything about that person you learned from Avery. But put that aside, he put the L and the R in Legislative Reference. If it, you know, Legislative Reference do a lot of work, a lot of work for the council, drafting and putting together and guiding us in our bills. It's an office that has lacked funding, space, but he has been there to really help guide the resources because of his, not just his knowledge of knowing the bill structure, but just his knowledge of Baltimore and not just helping the council, but also helping businesses and sponsors of all the bills that come through the process of approval in our city. So, congratulations to you, Avery. We all love you, and may you continue to do your travels around the world and continue to pick up Don Quixote souvenirs, and I hope that you find a wonderful place to put all of those pictures and artwork and iron statues and everything. It's really a nice history lesson. So, congratulations.
So, what we're going to do is, we're going to go through the legislative process, and then when it's time, we're going to do a roll call, and we'll allow members to stand up and speak if you would like to address Mr. Eisenstark. So, Madam Vice President, we're going to go through, you have to suspend the rules, and we're going to go through the process.
I suspend the rules.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, rules are now suspended. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And we'd like to put in this resolution for immediate adoption.
Thank you. So, we're going to move this resolution forward. It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. We haven't voted yet. That was just for the, to suspend and to move it forward today. So, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll. Again, members, this will be an opportunity, if you would like to address and put on the record all the amazing work of our brother Avery back there. No, you're still relaxing. You're relaxing.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye. And just reiterate, Avery is best in business. We thank you. We appreciate you. You are an actor to every single person in this chamber, so thank you.
McCray.
Yeah.
Dorsey.
Is the mic on? Thank you, Mr. President and Technical Wizard. I love Avery Eisenstark. I just want to say, I love Avery Eisenstark. We were elected, I was elected, along with a bunch of folks, coming in 2016, and I had the privilege of getting a jump start here in order to be able to introduce a resolution for same-day adoption on the night of my very first council meeting. And so, I had to jump in with both feet with Avery in order to, for that to be possible and to get that together. And I just didn't stop showing up at his office. Avery worked with me on things that were my priorities, and I had the privilege of helping to move something along that was a priority of Avery's, the Administrative Procedure Act, which the city, I guess, was the last jurisdiction, the last major jurisdiction in the state to adopt one. And folks with institutional memory like Avery Eisenstark knew that we needed to do this long ago and had it kind of lying in wait for anybody to usher it along, and I just said, "Look, let's get this thing done." But along the way of, oh geez, drafting the Inspector General's Charter Amendment, the Complete Streets Ordinance, and a variety of other ethics bills and other things last term, we spent a lot of time together, including a long Sunday afternoon in which I and a friend, Ben Smith, came in and deinstalled his entire collection of Don Quixote memorabilia that is now in the archive of the city of Baltimore, as I understand it. And along the way, one learns, one learns that the most commonly used term to describe very lovingly, of course, is idiosyncratic, I think is the word I've heard so often. And it is, it is a truly unique experience getting to work closely with Avery. I have a note in my office, working on Complete Streets, being a new legislator and bringing forth this, like, you know, 40-page bill or whatever it was. I had tried with some other inexperienced legislative drafters to put this thing together and folks that, in a way that we thought, you know, would make sense and maybe help this guy along, head start, to try to paint a picture of what we were going after. And he read through it and just kind of put his hand and his head in his hand, and he told us what he thought. And then followed up with this, "My apologies," in a way. And those are the words that I thought of when I woke up this morning, is really a sign of a person of enough humility to go, you know, maybe I didn't need to say that. But also, I was right. And it's just been a real joy to work with Avery. And I heard a bunch of stories along the way, and I'll just tell one other, and then I'll shut up. There's this great note, hopefully it's still around, that Steve Sax wrote about Avery that is an utterly glowing review of the man, I think, that was on the wall in the office. But there was another instance where Avery talked about being at a conference where some other legislative drafter, I feel like this is a kind of a particular kind of person that loves being a legislative drafter and loves being really good at it. And this guy had said somewhere, you know, "I drafted the first ethics law in the state of Maryland," and I think Avery replied, "But I drafted the first one that actually passed." So, here we have a man who has influenced our state and our city in ways unknown to so many and untold, and I'm very grateful for his contribution over his many years of service. Thank you, Avery. Yes.
Conway.
Hi.
Schleifer.
So, as Avery's councilman, I will take the liberty, I want to obviously thank him for his years of service, and hopefully that he doesn't use all of his knowledge of city workings to, you know, to call his councilmen and tell them what he needs to do every day moving forward. But many of you know Avery from City Hall, but what many of you don't know is Avery's actually been a pillar of the fit district in northwest Baltimore, and many institutions have benefited from his leadership from far before I was even born. And so, I want to thank him, not just on behalf of the city, but also on behalf of citizens of Baltimore and also northwest Baltimore that has benefited from your work. Thank you. Oh, yes.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Just wanted to quickly just say thank you, Avery. Similarly to what we've heard already, the first time I walked into his office, I wasn't ready for the history lesson and the amount of time I was going to be sitting there getting said lesson. I had no idea who Don Quixote was at the time. So, you know, I appreciate that. And just wanted to, again, similarly, thank you for, you know, newly elected a member in 2016, coming in, not really knowing what we were doing, what the process was, your level of patience with myself and I'm sure the rest of us on what we could and couldn't do was incredibly helpful in getting going. And so, I just want to thank you for your service to the city of Baltimore and to the Baltimore City Council for as long as you have done it and done it at a very high level. Appreciate you. Yes.
Bullock.
So, I, of course, but just want to thank you for sharing your wisdom with us all these years and helping us to be successful in crafting legislation to serve Baltimore. Thank you. Thank you.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye. Avery, I want to thank you. First two pieces of legislation I did took 19 and 14 months, and we spent a lot of time working on those two bills. And they were both unanimous votes, and I think that really was because of all the hard work that you put in and helped me get to where I needed to get. So, just want to tell you how much I appreciate that. I'll never forget that, and wishing you all the best in your next chapter. Thank you, Mr. President.
Stokes.
Aye. And Avery, I just want to say, I met you before I came to the council, when I was working for Councilman Carl Stokes, and you really helped me out to this point where I'm at, and I want to say thank you and wish you the best.
Oh, Glover Ramos.
Yeah.
The motion is approved. Before we move on and we actually adopt the resolution, if we could, Avery, if you could come up, this is somewhat unconventional to this chamber, but I thought it was fitting and really important. But if you could join me up on the dice to address everyone. He's never been up here before.
No.
And he also has 15 job offers. One, two, three, four.
No, I want to, I am not a speaker. I mean, I know how to put a sentence together occasionally, but I am not a speaker. Certainly, I want to thank all of you because I just want to say that it's been a great run. It's been wonderful. And I got a secret. I could use your help. I am searching for talking to a few museums, libraries, and the like in town, hopefully, to just donate that. That's why you retire, when you miss the words. And there's one of you who was nice enough not to say it, but on the CCs, in my letter to the President, I misspelled one of the, one of you, and since that person hasn't hit me over the head yet, so I'm not going to admit who it was. Now, you could go look and see. But I am looking, I am looking, I've got a couple of places that might be interested. Of course, I'm donating it, but it costs money to find places to put these things, to do them as an exhibit. And I don't want to mention names, but if you know anyone who is a CEO or something of that nature of a, just give my name and phone number. I'll be glad to do that. Seriously, it, I can't, I can't say anything but thank you. A, for making it so great. It was working with you and not getting told out and hit over the head. And if you agreed, that's wonderful. If you didn't, you still have the floor, not me. Thank you all.
We have an official one to frame. You're not going to leave if this, we have an official one to frame for you before you leave tonight. So, we also have a resolution, you're going to get the framed version before you leave. The City Council of Baltimore, be it hereby known to all, that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Mr. Avery Eisenstark in recognition of your 29 years of service to the Department of Legislative Reference to the city of Baltimore. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented to you on the 27th day of June 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, that motion was approved, and the resolution is now adopted. Madam Clerk, if we could go to the next resolution.
City Council Resolution 22-0114R, Baltimore City's Effort to Retain Professional Staff. For the purpose of inviting the city administrator, the Director of the Department of Human Resources, and the Director of the Department of Finance to come before the city council to discuss the managerial and professional society pay-for-performance system and what efforts the city is making to ensure that the appropriate funds are allocated in the annual budget to support this program so the city can retain its professional staff. Sponsor Conway.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So, this resolution, pretty straightforward, is to dig into what we're doing to address MAPS employees and what we've been seeing as a trend across the city for all city jobs, really, but MAPS employees are pretty important, if only because they have a lot of knowledge, insight, and ability to sort of make sure that we, as a city, stay on track. We've done a study already on Cub employees, but we've still had, during the budget process, pretty robust conversations about attrition and folks that have been leaving city jobs during the pandemic. This is not something that is singular to Baltimore. We're seeing this across the country. But we know that those people mean quite a lot to us. They mean quite a lot to the everyday functioning of city government. They mean quite a lot to the everyday functioning of city government. So look forward to a robust conversation about this, but everything we can do to keep people here with the city, I think we need to be talking about, especially at a time like this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This resolution has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, next resolution.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero one fifteen R. Reduction to the Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts. For the purpose of requesting that the Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts take certain necessary actions to ensure strict compliance with its September two thousand and twenty contract with the City of Baltimore, and generally relating to a reduction to the ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three from the Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts Service eight twenty-four. Sponsor, Torrance.
I would like to recognize the sponsor of this resolution, Councilman Torrance. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, as we agreed upon when we made the reduction, that we would come forth with a resolution specifying the commitments that we want from BOPA. I'm very clear about when I got elected to this council that efficiency and better services for our citizens is a must. Last year in Reservoir Hill, BOPA closed three streets with less than twenty-four hours notice to the citizens of Reservoir Hill for seventy-two hours. This movie studio left forty bags of trash in front of that actual, brand-new school building. BOPA took no accountability. They merely blamed the studio, and I want to make sure they have changes in their film officers' processes. So they should mail our constituents when they close the street, so they have more than just enough notice. They should provide parking accommodations for when you do close the street. While we welcome the hundred and fifty million dollars of commerce that came with the closure, it is unnecessary to say that a mere accommodation for those who live in the community and those who live in other communities will have it. In addition to that, after those same criticisms were launched against BOPA, they continued to do it. They filmed "We Own This City" in my district, ignoring the collective trauma that it caused. Again, when you have a constituent that calls and she sees a riot scene happening at five a.m. in front of her house, and the impact of looking out your window and not knowing that's happening at five a.m., BOPA again refused to change its policies. And I thank you for bringing the ability for us to move them in the right direction in terms of the delegated powers that we gave to them in September two thousand and twenty, with executed contract with the Board of Estimates, as well as understanding that they must deliver on Artscape. They didn't do it for two years. They didn't tell us how they're going to change the footprint of Artscape itself. They also have not committed to making the board, as well as its services, reflective of the artist community in the city. In order to be a person who receives two-point-seven million dollars of the city's funding each year, they have to be reflective of not only our city, but our values. So with that, Mr. President, I yield back.
Thank you. I see the hand raised. You want to speak? Oh, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you would please add me as a cosponsor to this, I just want to thank my colleague, Councilman Torrance, for his leadership here and his partnership to make sure we get all of the aforementioned things correct, especially ensuring that Artscape, the main footprint, will continue to stay in Bolton Hill and Mount Vernon, the eleventh district, while we support efforts to expand other parts of the festival, the areas like Station North and the twelfth district. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I see the hand raised of Glover, Porter, Dorsey, Ramos, Cohen, Burnett. I think that's it. Thank you. Dorsey, you would like to speak? The floor is yours. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also thank Councilman Torrance and Councilman Costello for their, for their efforts to hold BOPA accountable here. And for my part, just reiterate, the point about the board is of the utmost importance. This is an organization that we entrust as essentially being the cultural and leadership of everything that the city itself does. We, of course, give money to other cultural institutions such as the Baltimore Museum of Art, the Walters Art Museum, and Baltimore Symphony Orchestra, but for all other purposes, the BOPA acts as the cultural steward of the city. And I am looking forward to a process over the next year of working with the mayor's office and my colleagues here on the council to ensure that BOPA's board becomes reflective of the arts and cultural community of this city instead of being an institution that, an organization that literally has not a single full-time cultural producer on their board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, this bill's been assigned to, sorry, yeah, Ways and Means. No. Yeah, Ways and Means, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, if you go to twenty-two dash one-one R.
City Council Resolution Twenty-one dash zero one-one six R. Reduction to the Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, Baltimore City Sheriff's Office. For the purpose of requesting that the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office take certain necessary actions to improve the eviction process in Baltimore City, memorializing the mutual agreement between the mayor and the city council to provide five hundred thousand dollars in supplemental appropriations to the Department of Housing and Community Development to implement ordinance twenty dash four-six-five, right to counsel in eviction cases, and generally relating to a reduction to the ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three from the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office Service eight-eight-two and Service eight-eight-four. Sponsor, Ramos.
At this time, the board would like to recognize Councilwoman from the fourteenth district and sponsor this bill, Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This resolution outlines the concerns and justifications for the cut to the sheriff's office we made during the budget process and the mutual agreement between the mayor and the council on the use of funds for eviction prevention programs. I look forward to further discussions with the sheriff's office on progress with the items that we were concerned about regarding evictions, such as proper posting, letting the tenants know about eviction date, and also making sure that they're not evicting people who have, in a property that is not properly licensed. I look forward to the discussions and the progress. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any additional? I see the hand raised of Councilman Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, Porter, Torrance. This bill's been assigned to Ways and Means. You can now find the consent calendar in section A of the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This carries, and the calendar is now approved. We will now move the bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the duration of the meeting, hearing and seeing none. We are in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill on second reader.
EA twenty-two dash zero one-two-two. Amy M. McLean, Member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
Mr. President, the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held three hearings last Thursday, June twenty-third, and so I'd like to move EA twenty-two dash zero one-two-two, Amy McLean nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two-three-four, Police Accountability.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held three hearings on this bill. There are committee amendments on your desks, and I move the amendments favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second for us to move ahead with the committee amendments. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair.
I'd like to move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second. Before we move on, I think that there is a little unreadiness we are going to turn to. I saw the hand raised of the sponsor of the bill. Would you like to, so at this point, the, this body would like to provide Chairman Conway, the sponsor of the bill, opportunity to speak.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. We have a number of floor amendments for consideration, some of which we had an opportunity to discuss in committee, but we weren't able to draft for committee. And so I'm going to put forward, and I believe also, Councilman Torrance also has a floor amendment as well. So I will start with the first, and everyone should have the amendments on their desks. So the first amendment would change the amount of time that the police department has to refer complaints to the PAB from upon to receipt to two weeks. And I want to move that amendment favorably. Just for clarification, this was a conversation about feasibility for the department. The department gets complaints all the time, and the actual use for these complaints is for tracking purposes, for tracking the number of complaints that come in, when they come in and otherwise. So it was determined that two weeks was going to be a more reasonable approach. So if I could, I could move that favorably.
So before we move your amendment, I think we can go back to the chair of the committee. He had an amendment, he had, he, he put a motion on the floor to move the amended version. It was also probably seconded. We had some unreadiness, so that's what's stopping. So we're going to go back to Mr. Chair. Hopefully, Mr. Chair, you're okay with withdrawing your motion.
Yeah, so, you know, we did, we did discuss some of these amendments in the last hearing, and they weren't properly drafted, so that's what we're doing here. So I'll withdraw my motion so that we can introduce these amendments that we had discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So go back to you, Chairman Conway, for your motion.
Thank you. I want to move the amendment favorably.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. That amendment is adopted.
All right. And then there is a second suite of two amendments on page two from what was actually handed out to everyone. And this, these amendments do two things. It simplifies the qualifications for the board to just be a member of, to be a resident of the city of Baltimore. And then it also strikes some language requiring, one second. So each member of the committee be a resident of the city of Baltimore. Oh, this is a technical amendment also coming from the Law Department, making sure that we coincide with all applicable confidentiality laws. So these are two technical amendments coming from the Law Department. So I want to move these favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. That amendment is approved.
And I believe that's all I have, Mr. President.
That's all you have. At this point, I think that there's some other floor amendments. I'd like to recognize the gentleman from the seventh district. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. After a number of conversations with colleagues on the committee last week, we wanted to make sure that if we are going to allow former law enforcement on the actual panel, that we had to make sure that they were in good standing with the state, but as well as require that we request their entire personnel record as well to ensure that when we are receiving someone whose nomination is in good standing, that we have a proper evaluation of each candidate. A number of us discussed this amendment as a compromise, Mr. President.
Thank you. So is there a motion?
I so moved the motion, Mr. President. It's favorable.
So there's a motion on the floor. It's been probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. That motion on that amendment carries. Now we're going to turn back to the chair of the committee. We will need to vote on the bill as amended, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to move twenty-two dash zero two-three-four, Police Accountability, favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill will be printed for third reading. Turning back to the chair of the committee, Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
We got to read the next one in.
No. You're going to ask to invoke the rules.
Oh, you're double-reading it. Okay. So I'd like to invoke rules ten-one, twelve-one to advance this bill from second to third reading at the same meeting.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. We're going to have to have a roll call on this. So we're good. We got the roll call on the, to invoke the rule.
Right. Yeah, but we have one more bill in between that.
No, no, but we have to do this rule first for this bill, then we'll come back for the next bill. Madam Clerk, roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
The ayes have it. This bill will move for third reading today. Madam Clerk, if you could read in twenty-two dash two-four-two.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two-four-two, Charter Amendment Accounts Payable.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman of the Committee, Mr. Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
There are committee amendments on your desk, and so I'd like to move the amendments favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I'd like to move twenty-two dash zero two-four-two, Charter Amendment on Accounts Payable, favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is printed for third reading. Now we're going to go back to suspending of the rules.
So I'd like to suspend rules twelve-one for same-day advancement to third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second. We're still required to do a roll call, so Madam Clerk, if you could please read the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
The ayes have it. The bill is, will now move for third reading for today. Now we're going to turn over to bills on third reading for same-day advancement. Madam Clerk, as you, as you noticed, we suspended rule twelve dash one. That's why we're able to do that. The clerk will read the bill and call the roll for each bill. Madam Clerk, the floor is yours.
Twenty-two dash zero two-three-four, Police Accountability. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
Twenty-two dash zero two-four-two, Charter Amendment Accounts Payable. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. We're now going to turn to bills on third reading for final passage on the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero zero five zero, Burglar Alarms Registration and Regulation, False Alarms. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
If you could please allow the record to reflect that Chairman Schleifer is a no, so it passes fourteen to one. This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, on to twenty-two dash one-nine-three.
Twenty-two dash zero one-nine-three, Real Property Tax Credit for Energy Conservation Devices.
I would like to call on the sponsor of this legislation, Councilman Bullock. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move the floor amendment.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This amendment is adopted. Back to you, Chairman, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke City Council Rule twelve-three-B to advance this bill to final passage today.
All right, so this is a different thing for this council, so I'm going to read the specific rules about this. Our rules require that this bill is amended on third reading, be held over to our next meeting unless three-fourths of the council agree to advance the bill in final passage on the same day. There's a motion to advance the bill. Is there a second? All right, having been properly moved in second, Madam Clerk, if you could please read the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The three-fourth requirement was achieved. This bill now moves on to final passage. Madam Clerk, please read for final passage and roll call.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill is approved. On to 21-156. Madam Clerk.
21-0156: Zoning. Conditional Use Parking Lot 1207 and 1209 East 43rd Street and 1204 Springfield Avenue. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please let the record reflect that Councilman Dorsey is a no. So that's a 14 to one. This bill is approved and passed. Madam Clerk.
22-0207: Vacant Building Notices. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Members, the clearing of the bill status list can be found on page seven of the agenda from today. Any ordinances that remain on this list will have their status updated to withdrawn. Chairs, we're going to move on to committee announcements. When you hear a committee call, please stand and provide any updates associated with your committee. First up, Vice President of this body and Chair of Economic Community Development, Madam Sharon Green Milton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. No announcements.
Thank you. Next up, Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chairwoman McCray. I'm sorry. That was a slip. Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, August 25, 2022, at 5:00. This bill is on informational hearing on school safety on the same day at 5:01. There will be a hearing on informational hearing on addressing youth violence in Baltimore City. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now we turn to Chairwoman McCray, Health, Environment, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 22-0110R: Investigative Hearing Baltimore City as an Abortion Rights Protection Jurisdiction on Wednesday, July 27, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. Also, at 10:01 a.m., Wednesday, July 27, 2022, the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 21-0039R: Violence Against Women in Overlooked Public Health Crisis. Both hearings will be held in council chambers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, Public Safety and Government Operations. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill LO 21-0009: Baltimore City Fire Department EMT Paramedic Pre-Employment Screening and Hiring Process on Wednesday, July 13, 2022, at 1:00 p.m. in council chambers. And the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be hearing LO 21-0015: Baltimore City Fire Department EMT Stat and Operations on Wednesday, July 13, 2022, at 1:01 p.m. in council chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now we turn to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules 12-1 in order to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 22-0248 on Thursday, July 7, at 1:00 p.m. for a charter amendment Baltimore City Police Department Local Control Establishment. Oh, okay. I'd like to suspend Rule 10-2 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Rule 10-2 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing no objection, the rule is suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 22-0248 on July 7, at 1:00 p.m. for a charter amendment on Baltimore City Police Department Local Control Establishment and on Bill Number 22-0238 on Thursday, July 7, at 1:15 p.m. for a charter amendment Inspector General Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And last, but certainly not least, Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours. No announcements from Chairman Costello. At this time, we're going to turn to regular announcements. At this point, if you could raise your hand. I see the hand raised of Chairman Costello. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two announcements. One, we are in dire need of election judges in Baltimore City. I know the mayor, as well as many of our colleagues, have been talking about that for some time. If folks are interested in getting signed up, you can go to the Board of Elections website, or you can call them at 410-396-5550. We need to ensure that all of our polling locations in Baltimore City are fully staffed so that folks are able to have their voice heard in this upcoming election. The other comment I'd like to make, Mr. President and colleagues, is over the weekend, we had 24 robberies, 13 different shooting incidents, which resulted in three homicide victims and 18 non-fatal shooting victims, including a lady who was shot in her home, where we are all supposed to feel safe. None of this is normal. This is very far from normal and very far from acceptable. We had a seven-hour hearing in these chambers a few weeks ago with BPD, and we were given assurances that we needed to be patient and wait for this process to work. I, for one, will say that my constituents are sick and tired of waiting for this process to play out. We need something in action that is going to happen immediately to stop this bleeding in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any additional members that would like to provide a comment for announcements? Hearing and seeing none, I'd like to recognize the Vice President of the City Council, Miss Sharon Green Milton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, July 11, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. And may we have a moment of silence for the now 173 victims of homicides and also our continued prayers to families that still suffer from the opioid epidemic.
Thank you. There be no new business before the desk. This concludes the 35th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. We absolutely love you.